All right, welcome everyone to the Hadley Select Board meeting of May 3. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we, as a first order of business, we do have a consent agenda. So on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from March 1 for approval. We have four warrants, 44, 44 S, 43, and 45. We have approval for a cost estimator proposal for the senior center, which is AM Fogarty, and approval for the cost estimator for the fire substation, which is PMNC estimating. Let's see, Route 9 widening project 2021. There is a non-participating letter request for water and sewer lines replacement. Clarifier project, approval of the contract documents. And clarifier project, notice of no change orders without select board prior approval. And then the last warrant article for FY 2017, a notice that that will be July 19, 2017.
I'll second that, but I would like the letter that we're sending out, just an explanation regarding the DPW letter that we're sending out.
The Route 9 non-participation?
Yes, please.
Okay, so motion made and seconded for discussion. There's a question on the Route 9 non-participation agreement. Marlo or David, you want to speak to that?
Right, so we went to a special orders meeting a week or so ago where they were talking mainly about bus routes, but they also gave us an update on the Route 9 project in 2021. That was the next improvement for the widening from approximately Middle Street. And it was supposed to go to the East Street, but they seem to have extended the project all the way to South Maple Street. Anyways, we were advised at that time that if we wanted to have the same partnership with Mass Highway as we did with the Route 9 widening here whereby we concurrently with their project, we would be replacing infrastructure, water, sewer, storm, et cetera, that we should get our letter into Mass DOT requesting this now, sooner rather than later, I think is the words that they said.
I think they're approaching 25% design or something like that, so we've got to get it in.
Right.
But the takeaway is it turned into from here to East Street to all the way to South Maple in one project.
Non-participating agreement, does that mean we won't be participating?
No, it means we will be, same as the last project, we'll be going through the project. We will be participating in getting our work done, but non-participating is the work will be bid separately, like ETNL bid our water works separately, even though it was under Mass DOT's umbrella. So non-participating, I guess that's how that...
Yeah, so it's basically a $10 word, meaning that we're going to be responsible for only our portion of the project and that we're not going to be part of the state project. We're not going to be counted within their financing or their legal purview or anything like that.
Thanks for the clarification.
I did have a change also in the subfire station proposal on the estimator. There was $25,000 allowed in that account. It came in at $20,600, but it has now been also reduced to $17,800.
That's correct. We've renegotiated some of the pricing.
Both of them.
On both of them. So one of them is at 1,700 and the other one is at 17,000.
$17,800.
And the other one's at 17,800. And somewhere around here, I have my notes.
I have mine from my meeting the other night, so.
Okay, so that's for the senior center and the substation.
Right, so the recommendation of both the committees is to award the bid at the proposed price.
Okay.
Motion seconded in for Chair.
Yeah, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it for the consent agenda. We do have a posted public comment period, so is anyone here for public comment? No, okay. If not, then we have a fair amount of business to get done tonight and probably be spending most of our time with the finance committee. Why don't we just, so we can get some folks out of here, the fire substation and senior center updates. Jane, you want to go with the senior center?
Thank you.
Sure.
We're very pleased with what we're getting so far. Here is our blueprint that we're working on, and these schematics are only shells. There's no design feature in these buildings, please note that, but it's a general sense of how the layout will look. We're meeting with them again next Tuesday, and we'll get fancy on the pictures.
There's three different colors here, though, because they've not chosen any colors. They decided to show us three different colors.
Yeah, that's fine.
So there's nothing, and it's not, you know, it's not pretty yet. It's shapes.
Conceptual.
Just so you see, right. The dining, assembly area will be on the right, and the offices on that little building on the left, and then the rest of the building.
Am I still correct, this is going to be on a slab? There is no basement, or is there a basement?
That is right. It's on a slab.
Okay, very good. I wasn't sure.
So next steps, Jane?
Next steps, we meet with the architect again next Tuesday, and we make it pretty on the outside.
We talk about colors and materials, right?
We talk about colors and materials and, you know, where the windows are and if we like the doors there or here or whatever else.
But you still have to with all that, I imagine it's the same as what we have to go through, is that you have to go through the historical?
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
So we have to do all that, too. We can pick and choose right now, but...
Well, and we're keeping that in mind.
Yes.
And so you'll have, you can have something at town meeting for a night?
This is when I'm going to have a town meeting on Digger's Sheet.
Okay, so if anybody's at home and you're planning on coming to town meeting, stop by and see the folks from the senior center.
There's an awful lot more work done than just being shown to you. There was obviously five different choices that were shown to us. And floor plans and modifications to floor plans and everything, but this is what the committee has brought forward, and that's what we're working on.
Okay, good. Thank you. Do you want to do the fire substation?
I could have brought in some schematics, but again, they're in the process of changing also. We didn't have any colored renderings, as Jane did. That's still going to be worked out for our next meeting. We did talk about flood zoning in the back of the building. That still has to be worked out also. So, I mean, it is moving along, but we're just still in the process of, Mike met with the fire department and put it out to them to see if they had any ideas. There was some change on the inner part of the building itself, where to place doors on the outside so that it'd be accessible from different areas, the vestibule and coming in, having a, you know, a window there so that people can go up to it, too, if they have questions from somebody that's in the dispatch area. And yet keeping that confined to privacy also. But it's moving along, and we've got another meeting coming up where we'll have a little bit more. We're looking at probably going before Planning Board and Conservation Commission yet towards the end of the summer.
Okay. David, anything else we need to know about the fire substation project?
We did receive a letter from the Hadley Historic Commission. It's under review by council. I was thinking that we would have the council's response tonight. I did have a conversation with Joel Bard just a few moments ago, and so we're still studying this issue. And I think that the council's letter is going to indicate, one, that there's a little, very little case law on this issue. It's a contested area of laws without any clear direction, and that there's a state's judicial court proceeding on this issue, which will clarify it, but it may take a year for that to happen.
Okay.
It may take a year for us to make a clarification out?
For the SJC to make a ruling.
So where does that put the project?
Let me get the letter from Joel Bard to you so that we have all the nuances and make sure that I've portrayed accurately what he was telling me. I think that we proceed as the voters indicated we should. And if we run into a roadblock, we run into a roadblock, and we deal with it at that time.
Because that's what I was, you know, basically going to ask you about that on the 21-day appeal.
Right.
So this is what you're looking at? And somehow we needed it in writing?
I guess my only question is, how long has this letter been in existence? And why hasn't the board been made privy to look at it?
You have this letter in front of you.
42617 is what it says on the letter.
In your computer, I've never seen a hard copy. I don't use a computer.
I think that that's, she apologized for the informality of her note, so I think we're seeing a copy of the original here.
You know, usually anything like that ends up in my mailbox right away. And this is the first I'm hearing of it right now.
So it's something that we put on the agenda for tonight so that we would have an opportunity to talk about it. It should be in your package there. If it isn't, I'll make sure that you do have a copy of it.
I didn't see it, and I looked through this, you know, really good this afternoon, so I don't think it's in there.
Okay, well, it sounds like it was just an oversight then, when Jennifer copied the material.
Right, we'll make sure that you have a copy of it.
Okay. All right, so that is the update on the two building projects. We do have some appointments coming in, so want to start with the finance committee? Start, okay. So we have a joint meeting tonight with the finance committee, and I believe the, we were waiting on some conversation to occur with the finance committee on Monday night when you guys met, and I think you have an update for us. There are some recommended changes to the budget.
Yes, so we have one substantive change, let me have to put my glasses on, there's no change, I don't think I see it, is that we have added an additional amount of money to the fire department budget to allow for one extra fireman to be hired.
And that money came from?
Most of it came from OPEB, and a little bit came from bits and pieces that came from various other budgets, and David could elaborate on that.
I assume that as budgets were tweaked, there was some monies that became available?
Right, so $50,000 was deducted from OPEB, and $3,000 came from other sources.
Okay, but any, if any of the other sources was a departmental budget?
No, we increased meals tax by $3,000.
So $3,000 is the meals tax line? So just want to make sure, because if we were impacting any other departmental budget, we don't want them to find out about it on town meeting four.
Right, right.
Yeah, and we are not. So as of earlier today, we voted on this now balanced budget, and we're presenting it to you guys, so we'll be all set.
So hotel tax, that's the capital funding mechanism, isn't it?
It's a meals tax. Meals tax last year came in at $315,000.
But capital, what, the hotel tax is used for?
That's just goes to general fund.
Just general fund?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments for finance?
I know as a board, we voted to retain $75,000 in free cash. I certainly would rather this board vote to use that money instead of cutting money from OPEB. We've worked too hard the last four years, and our liability would be $9 million instead of 6.3. And if we're going to start reversing the game plan that our financial advisor has given us, it's a sad day in town. You know, we're really working hard at it, and it's going down, and that's keeping our bonding. You know, I know we voted as a board to retain $75,000 in free cash, but I think it would be much more important to protect that OPEB funding.
It's that they don't spend the OPEB funding till the fall, so we can still prioritize it and utilize the money out of the free cash in the fall while we're still budgeting for it out of a finite system that we have of the OPEB. I completely agree with you that, you know, that we should earmark it from something that we need to take it out of today. But I also think that if there's free cash available in the fall, then that's where we would and completely fund our OPEB money.
I guess the only thing that scares me, Selectmen Devine, is we're hoping free cash really builds to a high figure, and in my anticipation, I don't think it's going to get that high. You know, there's a lot of things that are happening. We're not going to get any money back from the budgets like we did before. The school hasn't got any money to give us back, and they even said the other night they're going to spend every dollar to protect the integrity of their budget.
Well, and I think that's actually why the suggestion was made, to be specific and say it was OPEB. And if, just to help with the conversation, our treasurer was present at the finance committee meeting, and this was a conversation that took place, and Linda, you know, again, not ideal, to your point, would prefer to fully fund OPEB, but recognizing that OPEB is a somewhat nebulous target, and this was really kind of a program that we agreed to, but it's not a true obligation at this point. And to Jerry's point, because we wouldn't actually, she wouldn't actually be cutting the check into the investment account, so to speak, until the fall, so there's no, a non-cash impact here. And the thought is that, you know, again, we're, we would still be putting $207,000 into OPEB, so it's not like we're, I agree with you.
We're not abandoning it.
We're not abandoning it at all.
A hundred percent.
And hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll be able to fund back to the 257.
And that's the priority of the finance committee, that in the fall, whatever monies become available, will backfill OPEB first.
We were concerned about this, too. We asked her about it at the meeting the other night, and she answered satisfactorily.
I wish I could have attended that meeting, but I had three meetings that night, and I chose the school committee, so, you know, but I caught the rest of your meeting on TV at home when I got home, and it was a very good meeting. You worked very hard that meeting, what I saw, you know, and, you know...
So we, you know, we are concerned also about maintaining that level of credit rating that is so beneficial to us. So we're concerned about it, too.
Yeah, we had to balance that against the safety of the townspeople and buildings, but mostly people. You can't have a fire chief showing up to a fire by himself.
Thank you. People wouldn't want that either.
No, I live in the style I like.
I'd like to make a recommendation and support the finance committee's recommendation this evening.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion, or are we ready to?
I just want to make one comment. I don't think that taking $50,000 from the OPEB budget at this point is going to do anything to our credit rating, since we have over $2 million in our stabilization account. That's the big one that counts the most at this point for our double bond rating. So I think $50,000 until we can back, fund it in the fall, I think, is a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor of accepting a finance committee budget? Aye? Okay, unanimous?
I'm voting no.
Oh, okay.
And the reasoning why I'm not happy with this budget at all, you know, we've worked hard in the last two years, we just can't keep taking free cash. I know how hard they work, and I don't consider it a balanced budget. I really don't, you know, and that's the reason why I'm voting no, but at town meeting, I will vote yes, out of necessity to pay our bills.
And then for what it's worth, I was able to speak with our other select board member. John Waskebitz isn't able to be with us tonight, but he's aware of the recommendations that you made, and he said that he was, you know, generally in support of that as well. So again, he's not here to vote formally, but he understood what you've done, was kind of fine with it. Okay, all right, so we've done that. Now do we have more warrant articles that need to be?
No, you've conducted all of your work on the warrant articles. We have the division of motions, we have CPA recommendations, capital recommendations, finance committee recommendations, select board recommendations. Planning Board took their public hearing last night on their three articles. You have a town meeting warrant that's ready to rock and roll.
Okay. One thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, in the past, we've kind of started trying to have a few opening comments in advance of this budget discussion to let the town folks know where we're at and what's going on. I'm hoping we do the same thing again this year, and, you know, I think, personally, I think that we need to set the stage for the fall town meeting and just indicate that, you know, again, we're a very active finance committee right now, and we're working very, continuing to work very hard on resolving some of the other needs of the town, and at this point right now, we have to honestly say that the revenues just aren't there. You know, and that, you know, we could be talking about revenue, we could be talking about revenue expansion in the fall. I think it's appropriate.
Say it, use the word. Say it.
An override, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
But, so, yeah. But I, no, I think rather than ignoring it, I think it's appropriate for us to just, again, set the stage so that they don't, to Donald's point, this isn't a perfect budget that we would want it to be, and we need to continue to work on those other issues. I mean, the fire department's been very clear that they need four people, not one.
Joyce, you've been in that chair for how long now? 15 years?
15 years.
Have you ever seen a perfect budget?
No.
All right, quit planning on having one, it doesn't happen.
No, and I never saw a perfect one for 15 years on the school committee either, so, you know, things just are not perfect. That's all right. You know, I've been to enough town meetings where they've spent money, all zero, write down in stabilization to nothing, because that's what they did back then. They didn't believe in bank accounts, and they didn't, you know, they had the money there, they spent it. So the tide has changed, you know, the people in town have changed, and the thinking has changed, and it's all for the better, and I want to thank the finance committee for stepping up this year and making things happen. It's been very appreciative.
Yep, very much. Tom?
I just wanted to comment about our neighbor Sunderland. They really did something unique. They passed supposedly a balanced budget contingent on an override passing. If the override doesn't pass, they're going to make massive cuts. So that's, we don't even want to tread on that water, you know, but this is how other towns are reacting to these budgetary woes, you know. Many towns are in a much worse shape than we are. We're actually pretty good shape financially compared to most towns, so.
Can you say that again, please, Donald?
Apparently they passed?
No, the part about being a good...
I think we are.
I think we are, too.
I think we are, too.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to run that by you, so David, you and I can work on a couple of talking points? Yeah?
Yeah, just to say, congratulations to everybody, this has been a long road. February 1, I presented my budget. We've been working very hard to bring it to this point, and you're all volunteers, the select board and finance committee have put in many, many hours in this, and your care and concern for the future of the town, the well-being of the people is evident in the decisions that you've made, so congratulations.
You're here, and we'll see what town meeting thinks about all of that. 24 hours.
Can I need one more comment, Madam Chair?
Yeah, of course.
You know, again, I'm pleased with your work ethics. It's going to take a Herculean effort in 219 to solve our problems, but you're all very conscientious. It looks like you really want to get into this, and that really impresses me. That's the most important thing. We've got a team consensus here now to try to tackle 219, you know, so that makes me feel really good.
Okay, so I apologize, I'm just realizing that the clock on the wall is stopped on 7 o'clock.
There's no budget for you.
So...
And it's 7:23.
So it's 7:23, and we did have a 7:15 electricity aggregation public hearing scheduled. I'm not too worried that we've avoided anybody in the audience by not holding that, but are we ready to open that?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Hope nobody's here for it, anyway.
Right, were we expecting any company tonight, David?
No, we gave, we've given everybody public notice that we're going to have a discussion about the electricity aggregation program that is being proposed for the residents of the town of Hadley. Just to remind everybody that we took a vote back in, oh, 2005, I think it was, to enter into an aggregation program whereby the residents of town would benefit on their electricity bill for a, for a reduction by combining all of their purchasing power, rather than having single homeowners go out and get whatever market rate they can, combine all of Hadley residences with residences from other towns, and then make a group bid for electricity, which should result in a lower price for households. It's been a long time coming, and we are in a situation where we can authorize the bid for this project, but a public hearing for anybody who might be interested would be, is necessary, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay, so does anybody have any oral comments or written comments that they would like to turn over relative to this program?
I guess the only comment I had, I'm a little disappointed with Mr. Awark, when I asked him directly if he had anything to do with working for the COG, and he replied no to me. Now he's the same gentleman. I wish I could tell you in depth, but I can't by executive session what's going on in the COG with this gentleman. Public record, we already paid him $16,000, and he's asking for a lot more than that, which I can't talk about. But outright, he told me, no, he had no connection with them, and so I'm a little disappointed in that.
Okay, so at this point, then, I think we can close the hearing, correct?
I think you can.
Okay, so motion to?
Motion to close the hearing.
The second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and then the next steps, David, so this marches forward from here, right?
This marches forward, and we go, we submit the legal documents to the Department of Public Utilities. Once we get their approval, we go out to bid, and the bid results will be brought back to the, to the select board. You can accept or not accept the bid results.
Right, right.
And is it at that point that we go to the, to the citizens in the town of Hadley and offer this?
Right, it's an opt-out program, so the citizens are automatically enrolled, so they should get an automatic discount if the prices come back. If they don't like it, they, they will be given a 30-day notice prior to this program being implemented that they can opt out before the first bill comes. And then they can opt out at any time without penalty.
And just to reiterate, one of the reasons that we entered into this or tried to do this program was because the citizens could quite potentially save about $100 a year off their electric bill.
Right. And in some ways, it's very similar to the municipal aggregation that we're already doing and have been doing for 10 years, and we save something on the order of $10,000 to $20,000 a year by aggregating our municipal purchasing. So now it's an opportunity to give to the residents something that we've been enjoying in town hall for quite some time.
Okay. All right, so we do have another hearing scheduled around the water and sewer rates for 7:30. We've got a few minutes before that, so I'm just noticing, we have the privilege of having Karen Purley here in our audience. Are you here for the electric?
Look, right, I'm here about, look, this, you know, there was something that was signed by the board. With the consultant, Larry Tuttle, and I just wanted to be here to answer any questions about the contract. I mean, the municipal building committee submitted it to you, I just wanted to be here in case.
Is there any questions on it?
It's, we worked with the municipal building committee and met with them a few times about this project. Three years ago, the town voted to replace the lighting, which involves replacing the electrical work, tube and knob, and the ceiling would need to be replaced. So it was a bigger project from the beginning, and the CPA recommended to the town, the town voted, and we started moving forward with the scope of work and quickly found that the electrical work was going to be a lot more extensive because of the hallway switch plate also goes to the second floor. And we were not going to do anything on the second floor because we, it's not open to the public. So in the meantime, the municipal building committee said they would help with the scope of work, and they've gone through a few consultants, so this is a new consultant that they're using and have put this contract together for him to do the scope of work, so we know exactly how much it's going to cost. Right now, we have about $83,000 to pay for this project, but we're not sure if that's enough. And the other, it concerns the timing of this, if we needed to close the library, and when would be the best time to do that? We don't, we're trying to go to the town if our grant comes through by October. We don't, we're trying to go to the town, if our grant comes through by October, to ask for the town to fund the new library, so we would prefer to wait till after that so there's no confusion of us spending money on the building. It is a town building, it's going to be a town building, so what we're expecting to do with the lighting is nothing library lighting, it is just to have better lighting, the balusters. We can't get some of the parts for it, so it's very dated, so whoever uses the building in four or five years, if the new library is built, will need this new lighting and that's why the municipal building committee got involved because.
Support of it, yeah.
Just to support this and to, because the maintenance of that building in the future will be under their supervision rather than the library trustees as stewards of the building. So, we're working together on it. We need to explore what's at the cost and the timeline of it all, and then once we have that information, decide, do we need more funding? Do, does the municipal building committee want to do this project, that type of thing? So, it's to find out what it involves.
Okay, yeah, and I think that's in concert with what we heard from the municipal building committee as well.
Right.
This isn't a surprise.
Right, and it's just something that, you know, was allocated three years ago and we've put it on hold, especially with everything else that we've been working on, and now, you know, at some point, it needs to be done. What, when, I don't know. It's something that we'll explore.
Has to be designed anyways.
All right.
Moshe, Moshe may I enter into the designer services for the electrical service for the Memorial Library?
Okay, is there a second?
No, second, no.
All right, any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you already do six-point-one?
David?
The liaisons?
Please do.
No, we did not. We're probably going to do that later, but we, the select board has received the request and I fully expect that there'll be a change for you.
Okay, all right, so, that's all I was just going to say, if that was something that maybe be addressed.
Yeah, I think, I think we have that.
Right, all right, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
See you tomorrow night.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, see you tomorrow night. All right, so, it's just after seven-thirty, so we can open the public hearing on, this water and sewer commissioners will open the public hearing for water and sewer rates. Water and sewer rates for those at home were, water rates, rather, were last adjusted in two thousand and seven and sewer rates were last adjusted in two thousand and eight. Okay, so, Marlo, David, who wants to?
Yeah, so, it's been a long time since we've adjusted those rates. Just a little bit of background, when we adjusted the water rates in two thousand and seven, we were doing it in anticipation of the debt service for the new water treatment plant at the Callahan Wells. And the promise of this water commissioners at that time was to hold rates steady for a three-year period and then start looking at the rates again, so from FY two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten, you kept the rates steady and then when we looked at the rates again, for whatever reason, the, the select board did not act. At the, at approximately the same time, the separate sewer commission increased the sewer rates back in two thousand and eight and then we combined water and sewer into a DPW in two thousand and nine and that probably is the reason why we, we didn't revisit this issue as vigorously as we could. But basically, we're in a situation where costs have risen over the last ten years. Our revenues have gone up and down based upon water usage and rainfall and, and weather events, but in general, the water and sewer revenues have been relatively stable and so we're at a point where we're looking forward to the future of both enterprise funds and thinking about the long-term service solvency of both enterprise funds and it's time for us to address that by addressing the water and sewer rates. I think you have some recommendations for the board?
Yes, I sent out, I think about a week ago, I think. So, we reduced mountains and mountains of data and information down to DPW, down to the seven-page booklet that I handed out. So, the trend basically has been balancing the operating budget by using reserve funds at the end of the budget cycle. I think we have somewhere around two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand left in sewer reserves and four-twenty-three in water reserves. So, to take off where David had mentioned, every year, it's increasing costs for materials, chemicals, wages, et cetera, so. What I concluded when I put the package together was, was there's definitely a downward trend in our reserves. So, we put together different rates here for water and sewer. We reached out to other communities around us. We gave options in water to potentially drop the lower tier and add another tier. My recommendation would be that if we do any, any sort of increase, that we do it across the board rather than move the tiers around. So, we were looking at the baseline, a six-point-seven percent increase for the water rates and a ten percent in the sewer rates would be my recommendation. Now, when you say ten percent, it sounds, it sounds like a very large percentage, but if you look at the, what the increase is per residential home, it's about forty dollars a year, which would be ten dollars quarterly when we go to the quarterly billing.
For a home with water and sewer?
Correct.
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 And for a home with water only.
And the water would be, yeah, and the water would be about an eighteen-dollar-and-sixty-one to that increase if you went with the six-point-seven percent. So, I guess what I'm saying is it would be about a fifty-eight-dollar increase per year, but it'd be broken down quarterly for water and sewer if you had both, with this six-point-seven and the ten percent respectively. I added some others in here, some higher percentages. I think, looking at the trend we've been on, I, I think this would be a real reasonable stopgap to slow down that trend of taking out of reserves, but we definitely would want to revisit our water sewer rates, you know, yearly in a budget cycle. I think it would, it would be good to do that. And again, none of these rates, I didn't couple in any of the capital projects that we have, you know, sitting or future capital projects, so I think those, those two rates that I mentioned here would be a good starting point. That would be my recommendation.
And then the meter charges are a separate issue, but they're related to this and you're recommending that we keep the meter charges the same?
Yes.
And just divide them quarterly?
Right. We did a lot of homework when we reached out to other communities to understand what they're charging for meter charges, if they had impact fees in sewer, just the, the way we do it here, see what other communities do. It's very hard to compare apples to apples because most communities do it all a little differently. It's a mountain of data to try and trudge through and get apples to apples, but we did the best we could with the three or four communities we reached out to and as far as the meter charges, I think we're, we should be. I don't see any need in raising them, but we do have to, the board does have to accept if we go to quarterly billing to break that charge that we have now semi-annually to the quarterly billing of that. So, I provided a spreadsheet on that too, it just breaks it down to quarterly as opposed to semi-annually.
But taxpayers always look at things the exact same way. So, what we asked you to do was to come back with some comparison information so that we could understand that everybody has water, I know they do it differently, but in the communities that are like communities that you were able to provide us with, Sunderland, Hatfield and Deerfield, Hatfield and Deerfield are higher in their rates at this, even with the increase that we're putting through, and I know that as you talk, different systems that are in place, Sunderland uses above-water ground, above-water aquifer. Okay, so they're not, they're not, they don't have the below-water and the pumping stations that we have to finance ourselves and the filtration systems that we fund ourselves. So, in comparison, the average household cost in Hatfield is three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. The new rate anticipated in Hadley is going to be three-forty-four, so it's thirty dollars cheaper. In Deerfield, they're currently paying three-hundred-and-ninety, just a little north of what Sunderland, of what Hatfield is paying, so we're going to be about fifty dollars less than the average bill in Deerfield. Sunderland, as I said before, has an above-ground water system that doesn't pump or have a filtration system, so their, their price is still ballpark, slightly less than what we're anticipating paying here. So, in our analysis of other communities, we will be less expensive than like communities, even at the increase that you're putting through. Fair assumption?
Yes.
Okay.
And then to add to that, the, the communities that we spoke with that you had mentioned, they're talking increases right now because they're basically the same.
These are prevailing rates.
So, their rates potentially could increase too.
I don't want to wait another ten years. I know that we made, made a commitment to the town when the filtration system went in, you know, nobody wanted perchlorate in town. Joyce and I were on the board when, when that happened and we needed a filtration system, the rates went up, but to the best of our ability or the best of this board's ability, it was kept for seven years at least above water. The last few years, it's been, you know, kind of leaking a little bit, no pun intended. But, so I think that we made the commitment, but I think as, if, if my right-left-hand man was here, he'd say, you can't wait ten years to adjust your bills. You have to do it on a slow and steady basis so that people can anticipate it and don't wait ten years as we did or eleven years as we did here in order to go up. When you talk about going up by six and, and ten percent, it sounds astronomical, especially in today's world, but the truth is, if it's gone up six percent in ten years, that means less than a percent a year. It's a lot more palatable for people to, to take care of. So, I appreciate the analysis. Does Sharon do this, a lot of this for you? Billy, Sharon?
It was three of us.
Okay.
But yes, the, the water analysis, Sharon, it's just that I'm running with, so, absolutely.
Well, thanks, that, that helps.
And I think, you know, even though you say six-point-seven percent, it was better to say numbers because people understand numbers better than they do percent. And if they understand it's going to be broken down into four quarters, you know, even that's a little bit easier to swallow than getting hit all at once on one bill with, with a certain amount, so.
I, I thought that was important, get those figures.
Mm-hmm.
Because ten percent is like, wow, but if you break it down, for what we're paying now, it's not as big a dollar effect as you think it might be.
You know, Hatfield's a tough town to compare with. They're very small systems and they're very adequate. I talked to Sean Berry, he's on the COG with me, he's chairman of the finance committee and he says, in the future, they don't even know how they're going to deal with it because they haven't been updating either of those systems and so they're really behind the eight ball on everything, you know. I don't mind the water rates being at the percentage that you propose. The ten percent that you're putting on the sewer rate, I would like to see that reduced to five because of our sewer impact fees. We get enormous amount of money in this town and our commercial district is having a tough enough time now. Our big-box store is trying to compete with Amazon and I don't really want to put a heavier burden on them because they pay most of those impact fees through restaurants and everything else and I think five percent would be adequate, not ten.
I would leave, we'd like to be back after town meeting, talking about sewer impact fees in a lengthy discussion as to how that helps or hurts, what, what's being done with that now. I know there's a lot of, we've received a lot of complaints in recent history and I know, Marlo, it's a bone of contention for, for your office down there regarding the amount of money that our sewer impact fees are costing to the new businesses that are coming to the town. It seems like thirty-five thousand dollars for sewer impact fee for someone that's adding a bathroom to their current facility. I think we need to look at that again.
I sort of agree with you, Jerry, but also, those sewer impact fees have brought in like a million and a half dollars.
They have.
That's how we've updated all our sewer lines, we've updated our sewer plant. Without those impact fees, we've been in the same situation as Hatfield.
I don't want to eliminate them.
David?
Yeah, just, just for point of information, the sewer impact fee, you can debate it or not, but it doesn't cover the operational costs.
Right.
It's for capital costs only. The, the rates basically cover our operational needs.
I think.
And building reserves, I guess.
I think, end of note, several years ago, Hatfield's put sewer lines throughout all the town over there, which we don't have over here in Hadley. So, that, that's to their benefit over there. Now, what they've done with it since then, you know, they got a grant and stuff to do that, we didn't, so they made out then, but they haven't updated it or kept it up, so.
Well, if it's Jerry's intention to postpone this till after town meeting, I would make a motion to continue this hearing till after town meeting for further discussion if he wants to get some discussion for impact fees and things of that nature instead of voting on it tonight.
I'd like this to be able to cover our operational costs and that's what we're talking about tonight and I still want an impact fee, I just want it reviewed and kind of some analysis done to try to understand the needs of the, of the sewer department as far as capital plans going forward in the future, what we're anticipating. We got our clarifiers. We are, substations have been, our two major substations have been redesigned in the last couple of years. I know we're still going to have other things coming up. What we're talking about tonight is the operational expense on an annual basis being covered by the ratepayers that we have and that's all we're doing with these two increases, unless I'm wrong.
Correct.
That, that, that can't be less than that.
And we're slowing down, taking money from reserves to maintain that operational service. Impact fees is, is totally separate. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that can only be used for, for the capital, capital and infrastructure upgrade. You, you can't, the way they're set up, I don't believe we can use impact fees to, to put towards the operating budget. So, the impact fees, I understand what you're saying, but it's a separate issue from what we're talking about here, how, how they're, how we can use them.
Yeah, and I, and I think, Donald, I, I totally get, and I, I don't want to be, you know, Route Nine is the goose that laid the golden egg for the town of Hadley and a lot of these commercial enterprises, we do want to be sensitive, but I, I think the conversation, to Jerry's point, really should be about those impact fees as opposed to this. So, I, I'm comfortable with the proposal here, it's been a long, long time.
I'm just worried about the new scope of Route Nine and Twenty-One. They're going all the way to the malls now and they're, we're going to be talking updating sewer, water lines in those areas and it's going to be very, very costly for the town.
And, and not to get too far off base from all that, but as far as that, that meeting that took place, that was my immediate concern. If they're going to go all the way from here to South Maple, we got to look at all our water and sewer. We have to design and engineer all of it, find out, you know, where we're at with that infrastructure. They're putting extra wide bike lanes and sidewalks and are they going to cover our existing infrastructure so we can't get to it? So, all them things come into play, so David and I had talked that we should be getting Mastio T back in here and say, hey, let's tell the town here what you told us.
Right.
Because that, that, that's, that's a huge cost just to design and figure out what we need to do between now and, between here and there, I should say.
Well, and the other thing with these, with, by voting to, to change these rates tonight, we won't even see the impact of this until next year, right? We want to be.
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, delaying it, I mean, that's, we lose a whole nother fiscal year. So, okay, motion?
Motion to accept the fees as presented across the board, uniform percentages across the board for water and sewer.
Second for discussion.
And just to clarify the, the motion, so that also includes adjusting the tiers for quarterly billing and adjusting the meter charges for quarterly billing.
Yes.
To Donald's concern, I'm sorry, the second for discussion.
Yep.
To Donald's question to you saying it's ten percent, does eight percent cover our cost? If we were to go eight this year and two next year, does that cover?
Where I came to the figures was, it's estimated that we're going to be adding another, adding one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand to the, I guess, chargebacks. So, when we, we put this together, we were looking at, if there's going to be an additional chargeback, we, we proposed the rates to at least cover that, to stop pulling out of reserves and see where we could end up with the operating budget this year, so.
Our chargeback is going up by one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand?
Sixty-one and, well, it's estimated, sixty-one in water and sixty-two in sewer.
We, we can always decide to hold the rates a year later, but if we don't do it now, we're not going to get that revenue in and then we could find ourselves in a slippery slope.
We're not doing it, we're not going to get any revenue for another year.
That's what I mean, so if, you know, I'm, I'm saying if we take a further decrease, then again, it's, we're just pushing this out, which is.
I guess that leads me to ask another question now that you opened up the thing about chargebacks. These increases, you're talking about chargebacks, are at what percentage?
I don't know the percentage. I don't know the percentage.
Well, that's one thing I'd like to know. I'd like to know how much is coming out of water and sewer and chargebacks that are being used to fed our free cash account so we can pay our operating budget in the future. I think the finance committee needs to know that. I think we need to know how much chargebacks are coming out of every department in this town to feed the free cash account, which we've got to get away from.
I have dollar figures, but I don't have the percentage.
I'm sorry, when you're talking, are you talking the year-end? When, I just got confused when Donald was talking about free cash. At the end of the year, whatever's not expended in an operating budget moves to free cash.
Except in the enterprise fund.
In the enterprise funds, no.
The enterprise fund, money that's left over goes back into the enterprise reserves.
Yeah, okay. Right. So is that what you're?
Yeah, the same thing. I just want to make sure that money's protected. It's easy to raise rates on everything, but if we have money that are in these enterprise funds, maybe we shouldn't be raising the rates like we are. I can understand if it's for operational expenses. I don't have a problem with that.
Yes.
But Jerry's thought about talking about impact fees at a later date is very important to me. I think he brought up a very good point.
Yep, and we'll make sure that gets on an agenda.
You know, because I hate to see us losing businesses on Route 9 because it's going to be reflective in loss of revenues everywhere, you know, so.
It is my intent as the director going forward to take a look at all the water sewer regulations as a whole. I mean, that's not to tip my hand on maybe a Coles' objective for next year, but I think that's something we all need to do, is take a look at them water sewer regulations and get them updated because there's a lot of language stuff, at least that needs to be changed. But that may be a good time where we look at everything as a whole, clean sweep, so to speak, so.
So Jerry's question, do you think we could cut from 10 percent to 8, or no?
We can, but like I said, that's what I came up with the rate to offset the increase in administrative costs for this year. So in other words, I'm trying to slow down because the reserves are so low now that once we run out of reserves and we can't balance that operating budget.
But very specifically, what, how much more do you need to go up on the percentage in order to offset the money that we're taking out of reserves now to balance the budget? Is it the 10 percent? That the number that you need to?
No, that's just slowing it down. I think.
It's higher, isn't it?
It's a much higher number. In the trend, with the information I was given by the accountant, in that trend, it's a much higher percentage. And I presented a very low portion of that percentage to slow this down so that we can look at them yearly. We should look at them yearly in where we're at because the capital, I mean, excuse me, yeah, the capital plan is a living document. That can change from year to year, honestly. We just don't know what can change in that, as far as I know.
How is the quarterly billing going to affect you? There's got to be a cost, you know, there of getting those readings and everything quarterly instead of every six months.
We're down to, I should know the number of this. Say 80 meters that have not been swapped out. So our reading time is cut down to about a week or less, depending on what we run into. But we've also made a smaller change to help out the collector's office going to quarterly. We're going to, we have insight put on Sharon's computer so we can load the gun, load the gun down there. We can read during the day. She can download the data and then now she can start running reports to prepare billing and all that. So we've absorbed part of that, we want to absorb part of that. But the quarterly billing on our end, it isn't going to affect us because that was the intent of changing these meters out from day one.
Now, the 80 meters that you're referencing to, those are the ones you have to read manually? Not electronically?
Correct. Yeah.
So I thought we passed the bylaw that everybody had to be converted over by a certain date.
I don't know. I wasn't.
Do you recall? And I guess my question is, why do we still have these 80 meters out there?
Well.
We still have life to them and they're changing over as they.
Well, we had 200 of them when I arrived. We've sent out numerous letters. It's important to get them changed out. We just have not heard back from 80 or so to swap them out, to go.
I'm pretty sure we took a vote at town meeting, you know, that everybody had to be converted over by a certain date.
But that's an ongoing project for your department, correct?
It's an ongoing project.
Yeah. So you've been whittling that down.
Yeah, but if one is broken, you replace it with a meter that they're supposed to have. But if it's a good meter and running, it doesn't get changed.
Well, no, Vince, no, we're changing all the radios. That was part of the whole program so that you can do a drive-by and read these things. The older style, you have to walk up to each house and plug it into the box.
Donald, are you volunteering for door-to-door campaign?
I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out why they're not being done and, you know, the reasoning behind it. I know it's probably a time element with help from your department too. But are people adversely affected, say they're not changing? And they don't want to get updated to the electronic ones and they want them to be done manually because they're still running well?
I don't know the answer to that, why they haven't called. I mean, everyone's received numerous letters to swap their meter out to the.
Because there's a cost to swap. How much does it cost to take an old one out and put a new one in?
Your cost is right around $115 to $120.
And that is taken up by the homeowner?
No. Oh, that's all part of our program. We're down to 80 meters.
So then why wouldn't they change them if it doesn't cost them anything?
I have no idea. They're not calling.
They're not responding to him.
The most recent letter was a little more aggressive, but we just haven't heard from 80, somewhere around 80 customers. We have not heard from them. But we dropped from 200 to 80 in a year's time, which was pretty big, not hearing.
Could we have town council draw up a letter, finding out that, stating maybe they have to convert or something?
I don't want to pay town council to draw up a letter.
Well, I know, but if we can't get these 80 people that adhere to the rules and regulations of the town, we have to do something.
They still have enough time to go after these people, I think.
I think there's other approaches we can take, but this other letter just went out like two months ago, so.
They're working on it.
It's something we can definitely revisit.
Motion on the floor.
Okay. All right, so motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you for the work. And please thank your compadres down at DPW who helped and Sukwatski too.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, appreciate it.
Chapter 90, were you here for chapter 90 contract?
I was going to say, chapter 90 DOT tenure contract?
Let's send them home. Can I get you over with, Marlo, so you can go home?
So you can go home?
Do you?
What we'd like to do.
Okay. So David, is that you or Marlo leading this discussion?
Both of us, I reckon. What we have to do is, we receive chapter 90 money for roads and bridges from the state every year. That is somewhere in the neighborhood of $360,000, a million dollars, thousands.
365.
We've got a problem with the thousands lately.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
To millions.
I always have that decimal issue, don't I?
All that cutting you had to do.
Okay, so for this fiscal year, we got $365,000 based upon a $2 million state transportation bond. So we participate in this program on a 10-year basis. Our 10-year contract is almost up, and so now it's time for us to renew. Then we have to renew the contract.
Motion to renew.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, Marlo.
Oh, before you go, quick update on Bay Road. I see it in the package in here. You say they're starting on May 8?
Monday.
Yes.
Just so the public knows, it's on TV.
Right now, it's targeted to start May 8.
Don't hold your breath.
I got an email back from Mr. Barineski, the senior bridge engineer, this afternoon, as a matter of fact. I think I forwarded it, but they're saying the 8th, which is Monday. Depending on how many heavy rains, thunderstorms we get. The only thing that's holding them up at this point, or the only issue they could have is high water as they start to work on these piers, so.
Do you have any idea if the traffic patterns are going to change when they start? Or is it going to stay just like it is?
They're going to stay just like it is, I believe, but once they switch over to do the other side, take that and flip it, we'll be on the other side.
And they said 16 weeks max?
Yeah, that's what they originally said, something like that.
Okay, good night.
Do you have any idea what side they're starting at?
I would assume the way they have.
Right aside that's barrier.
I haven't seen it.
I'm assuming.
You haven't been across Bay Road Bridge?
Not lately.
Oh, my goodness, six.
It's looked the same for the last two years.
Oh, across there? No, 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 I'm saying. No, I've been over that, but I'm saying, you know, where you go into the water department, are they going to concentrate in there and park their vehicles on that side or the other side? That's what I'm getting to.
Actually, SPS, the contractor, has reached out to me. And I've authorized them to stage some equipment on that small gravel drive, right there next to the water treatment plant. But they've also asked if they could store some small pieces at our townyard. The gentleman reached out to me today. I'm going to meet with him tomorrow. He's supposed to come by. I just needed to get an idea where, how much equipment he has because I might not be able to put it all there. But most of what they need to do is going to be staged right there at the bridge. And I also made it clear to them that that field is off limits to be running around with equipment. Yes, yes.
Down your throat.
So then you're saying the highway garage would be for additional staging of equipment?
Yeah.
If they only use periodically, they could run it back and forth.
Well, you know, barriers, cones, and if they need to keep a couple loads of stone there and keep an extra backhoe there or something. I mean, I don't have a problem with, you know, the board.
You can't harm the endangered species.
Correct.
Good night, Marlo.
You sure?
Next item we have on the agenda, so I think we just roll through these in order. Select Board liaison appointments. So typically, it's been the pattern of the select board that after the election cycle, we go back and we readdress the committee assignments, the liaison assignments. So right now, I am assigned to general government, which is basically town hall. Joyce is assigned to public safety. Jerry has public works and the council on aging. John has the library, park and rec and veterans affairs. And Donald has the school department and Hadley media. So one question is, is there a desire, a strong desire on anybody's part to change?
I want to stay with Marlo.
And then there was a letter that was submitted by the library. And John's not here tonight, but just concern that, you know, clearly if anybody's not able to make meetings or respond to the requests that are coming from the departments that we're liaisoned to, it's probably a good idea not to retain that and have somebody who does have the time or the willingness to pick that up. So I think we do need to make a change, at least with the, with the library.
No, not the library. You don't mean library. Oh, the library.
No, because, right, because John hasn't been able to attend the trustee meetings and the like. So, I mean, I will volunteer to pick that up because I was on the building committee and have some contact with those folks anyway, unless somebody else is dying to do it. That's what I thought. Okay, so I will pick up.
Thank you, Molly.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Molly.
That's what general government is, everything, isn't it?
I guess so, yeah. But any concerns or requests on the other assignments?
I also do the capital planning committee and municipal buildings committee as well, so I have the four of them.
Yeah, you've got a full plate as well. And Donald, Hadley media and the school department have regularly scheduled meetings that you're able to go to most of them.
Hadley media is calming down, so, you know, it's not as many meetings. We're meeting sometimes every week, but now it's getting to be once a month, so.
Okay, oh, that's, yeah, that's getting better.
You know, education is education. I just didn't keep that one. Enjoy doing that.
All right.
I'm doing ambulance and fire substation, plus the police and fire.
Yeah, so you want to keep those too, right? Okay. All right, so we'll just make that one change then, if that's okay with everybody?
What, does that leave John with?
Um, he will have park and rec and veterans affairs.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Motion to make changes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we already did the substation. David, Nexamp solar development pilot agreement.
All right, so we have two articles on the warrant for the solar pilot agreement for installation that Nexamp Incorporated is installing.
Let's be very clear of these properties. There's three of them on the table. The two that we're speaking of this evening are the Goulet properties next to the Walmart.
The controversial, right, the controversial one is the EverSource solar array, which is 1 megawatt, which they are proposing to put in at the intersection of Moody Bridge Road and South Maple Street.
And we're not speaking of that this evening?
And we are not speaking of that, nor is there an article on the warrant for that project.
Okay.
So the two projects that we are talking about collectively make 5 megawatts of solar fields on the Goulet property next to the Hampshire Mall, just off of South Maple Street.
So, and it'll be juxtaposed with the bike path? Is that that plot of land?
It'll be what?
One is tennis down where they were going to put a super Walmart.
Juxtaposed?
Yeah, so it's going to be, it's going to be situated near the bike path and the, right, near, is that the lot we're talking about?
Way down.
Yeah, so it's not going to be like on South Maple. It's actually set back.
Right, it'll be off, it'll be off South Maple. I mean, people will be able to see it, but. Anyway, so that project seems to be going forward. Massachusetts general law allows for solar developers to approach town for a alternative tax program called a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot. And we have negotiated five of these already with other solar developers, including two projects with Nexamp off of Mill Valley Road. We've always approached this from the point of view that both sides can win, that the solar developer has a better handle on their cash management. And the Hadley taxpayers will receive more tax money in the long run than they would under a straightforward tax taxation program.
So if this is in 61A now, this property is in 61A because it's farmland, it's a significantly greater amount of money that we'll be receiving from the pilot than we would be under if it was A and R land, right?
Right. We have some estimates that the 2.6 megawatt parcel would receive about $90,000 more in tax money under a pilot agreement than with straightforward taxation over a 20-year period, 20-year period.
That's over 20 years, 90,000 more.
90,000 more.
Where do I sign?
And then the other one would be a little less than that. It's a smaller project, but somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 more in taxation than regular taxation under the pilot agreement. This has to be approved by the selectmen first, by the town meeting next, and then reviewed by department of revenue, so.
These are the two that are on.
These are two on town warrant.
Yep.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Every time it shines, we're making money.
That's right.
Let the sun shine in.
Okay, select board meeting scheduled, May through August, so.
First and third Wednesdays. Any holidays?
Yeah, the July 4th on, technically on the.
Second week. July 4th, let's not interfere with.
Okay, well, let's start with the month of May because May actually has five, count them, five Wednesdays. So we're meeting tonight, then that would be the 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st.
Let's not get carried away.
No, I'm just, I'm just defining the calendar.
Tell her.
I would hope that we would be meeting at least three of those because the other thing is, if we're serious about thinking about the work that we have to do between now and fall town meeting.
For God's sakes, we haven't had spring town meeting. That's all we talk about here is town meetings.
We do.
Right? The poor finance committee agree with me here.
Thank you, finance.
Drinking the Kool-Aid, that's terrible.
Madam Chair, I'm inclined to agree with you 100 percent. You know, sometime in the near future, we have to have our town finance officer in. And I want to hear something from a neutral person, looking at it from a different way.
Yep.
A tri board, maybe our tri, next tri board meeting, the school is really gearing up for that.
Okay.
So maybe that and Linda and get a real good picture of what we're up against in 219 before we even think about working on it, you know? I'm sure the finance committee wants to know, you know, so.
I know we wanted the municipal buildings committee in for a relatively significant.
conversation.
June, yeah, June sixth or seventh, whatever that date is.
Do we have that plugged in already, so I can?
No, you haven't set your schedule, so.
Right, I mean, I have it on my notes to plug it in, but depending on when the schedule's set.
So the first Wednesday in June? If we, I just wanna report back to them tentatively that that's gonna be an agenda item meeting for June if that were.
You know, and maybe something else for that agenda is to go in depth in the DOI report, to review it. We really just skimmed over it once and not really got into discussion anything about it.
We'll have the audit report by then, that needs to be reviewed. I mean, I do, so I'm hoping that we can, can we just start with May for now? So, do people wanna meet next week?
No, next week.
So that's the tenth.
I have a dentist.
That's a good reason not to meet. You won't be able to talk.
Oh, thanks.
So we've got the tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. David, do we have requests that are queued up, that have been pushed off, that need attention next week?
The only thing, no, not next week, but we do have a couple of permits that are for hearing. We've scheduled up for June sixth.
Okay, so what if we do the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth in May?
Trust me.
That good? And then the thirty-first, we're all gonna be marching in the parade, and I'm sure we'll be exhausted, so we can take the thirty-first off.
Where's the parade on the thirty-first?
No, it's on that Monday, right? The twenty-ninth.
No, it's the twenty-eighth. We always do it on Sunday.
On Sunday. Oh, I just meant that we'll be, all be together on parade day.
Are you looking at tri board meetings for those days, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth?
Well, that's something we need to talk to you guys about too, as to how you want to work with us as we march through the summer projects. I mean, we could also, to Donald's point, we should have formal tri board meetings to involve the schools, but I think that there may be a fair amount of work that you guys want to engage with us on, and if that's the case, maybe there's a standing agenda item for you guys. I mean, if you wanna talk about that and propose.
And I'd like, I think we should wait for Donald to get back to us. The school has a couple brand-new members, there's a lot of institutional knowledge just left that board, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank them at some point in time, too. But they're getting their feet wet, and I'm sure they, you know, want a meeting or two to get, you know, a little understanding, tend to their belts, before we set up a tri board with them. But I think it's imperative that we get a tri board, but maybe the twenty-fourth is a better time for that and let them get a couple meetings in.
Okay, so we'll coordinate that with the schools. And then in the month of June, the dates are the seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth. Are any of those Wednesdays really bad for somebody?
Seventh what?
And twenty-first would be the first and third.
Right. And again, we may need to tack on, depending on what we have.
Don't get carried away. It's summer.
I know, but we'll see who's standing up in front of town meeting in the fall, then. So, that's June. And then, July?
Fifth.
We've got the fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth. Now, I will tell you, I'm on vacation the week of the nineteenth, I'm not gonna be around.
Neither will I.
Okay, so I think if.
I'm gone on the fifth.
You're gone on the fifth, okay, so maybe the twelfth and the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Sure.
Is that good?
Okay.
Okay. And then, we've got August. So that's the second, the ninth. So we wanna do the first and the third in August as well?
There's five Wednesdays that month.
Yeah, let's do three of them if you're gonna.
Okay, so.
August is bringing us into gear, should we, are you, where are you at, David, the last week of August?
Yeah, so sixteenth, I hope to be at Sacramento.
Okay, so what if we did the second, the ninth, and the twenty-third?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay.
Seven?
Hmm?
Seven?
Seven o'clock.
Yep.
Tri boards are usually at six.
Right, that, when we figure out when the tri board is, we'll start that one earlier, probably.
David, if you could notify the municipal buildings committee, just send it to David Tudrin for the seventh, and we'll set them up for the joint meeting, please and thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and then David and I will work on scheduling the other guests that Donald was referring to that we've talked about as well.
And I know that the subfire station architects and things are gonna be wanting to come into us, too, so.
Okay.
They wanna be put on the agenda, I'll let you know when.
Okay.
We should do those both in cooperation, because Collier would be, he'll be here for both of them, so.
Yeah.
As they're working out together, that would be pretty good.
Okay, so Memorial Day Parade?
Yes, it is.
This is just the consent for?
I think it's more of an informational, don't you?
I said consent next to it, that's what I was looking at. I don't know if we had to actually approve something.
May twenty-eighth.
Okay, so that the Hadley Legion is cordially inviting everyone to participate in the Memorial Day Parade, which is on Sunday, May twenty-eighth at two o'clock, consistent with prior years. The formation time is at one fifteen at the Legion, and John Kirish is a point of contact for this, as well as Tom Stilarsky, the Legion itself, Kathy Zaturka, and Gene Baxter. And presumably, we'll be doing the semitaries and all of that. Right, so is everybody able to participate?
I am.
Yep, ten forty-five.
You're driving, Donald? Did they ask you to drive yet?
Yeah, drive and march same time.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Multitasking.
Yeah, probably. I guess they did drilling in that upper lot, David, for the senior center, and there's more holes up there, and they're cleaning it, too, now, they're finalizing it. So, I know you're gonna have continued talks, you and Marlo.
Yep.
On the finishing product.
Yep.
What it's gonna be, okay.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action on that? And by the way, the finance committee is always invited to march as well.
Bring candy.
Yes, you wanna bring candy.
Hard candies.
The only trouble, you have to have shirts with a dollar sign on it, so everybody knows what you're there for.
And a target.
Yeah, and a target on the back.
Who's gonna take a picture, though?
Yeah, I know, that's right, yeah. So, David, is there anything that we didn't touch on in your administrator's report that you feel we need to touch on today?
On all town meeting, all the town.
I mean, that's what it's been for the last two months. If you want this, is there anything in there?
Let me just.
Look on yours.
We've gone through all of the major parts here. Town meeting, everybody show up tomorrow, seven o'clock, Hopkins Academy. We need a hundred people. Mother's Club will be there with their earthly delights in the form of baked goods, and a lot of important business to conduct, twenty-five articles. Should be a good time for all of us.
We got some dedications we need to speak of, I think, as well, when you're done with your talking about, I wanna make sure we address the dedications on the yearbook, too.
Absolutely. So I think that's it.
I just have one question. I asked Jen this morning, and she didn't know, she didn't have an answer for me. A sign appeared up on the fence for a Northampton church.
Yes.
And it's supposed to be all Hadley, I thought, only?
So I don't think that there's an all Hadley clause to.
But I'm saying, that could be, a can of worms were opening up, anybody could come and approach and hang a banner there for any reason.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think we're letting Northampton in, a church in Northham, I'm not against churches, but they're from Northampton.
Hmm.
So I think that creates a problem.
I agree.
It's a Polish dinner, and I thought it was the Polish dinner for the Most Holy Redeemer.
Which is the picnic in the summer, yeah.
Yeah, but this is a Polish dinner for Saint Valentine's Church in Northampton.
Yeah, we, the select board delegated the authority.
To David.
To David for that, so, but we didn't put any parameters around it, so.
Right.
I mean, I think at this point, the banner's up, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not saying to take it down, but we should have some regulations for the future, I think, to prevent, you know, everybody coming forth and wanna hang banners.
I actually don't recall Saint Valentine's approaching me, so, I mean, it's worth me giving them a call and saying, you know, it'd be nice if you asked before you plunked your sign on our fence.
Yeah, see if somebody else gave the nod.
I would like to make a motion that it is dedicated. I don't wanna see that fence turn into a, you know, a sign for anybody else.
Yeah, just like a.
So I would truly like to set the parameter that that only be utilized for Hadley functions.
Let's, if you don't mind, let's confer with Joel tomorrow when he comes, 'cause, you know, it just strikes me that there's all sorts of First Amendment issues that we need to pay attention to.
On our property?
I don't.
I'm just, I'm just, I'd rather protect the Hadley taxpayers.
Okay.
Just humor me.
Yes, sir.
I don't.
As long as it's a conversation with Joel in the parking lot on his way over to town meeting, and it's not going ka-ching, we're paying for it anyway.
Right.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's hypothetical.
Yeah, just a hypothetical. Okay, Joyce, do you have?
I didn't have any.
Oh, I thought you wanted her.
You wanted to do the.
I'll take Glenn Clark.
I'll take Ray Sholl, if you want.
Okay.
You've worked with Marilyn for years, you know her quite well. I wonder if anybody's ever contacted their daughter to be there to accept it?
I don't know.
I think Ray will be there, and Glenn Clark will be there.
Marilyn's daughter?
Yeah.
I think that there was extension made to have that conversation.
I'm not even sure where she lives or anything.
Jen, I think, was talking about it earlier today.
That she made a contact.
She didn't know whether or not she'd be there, so, but, but I think that she did make the contact.
Good, good.
And just while we're on the subject of schools, Jerry reminded me that we were probably, well, not probably, we were remiss the evening after the election, because we had two very longtime town volunteers quietly roll off of their elected seats on the Town of Hadley School Committee. So tonight, just wanna extend a heartfelt thanks to Robie Grant and Linda Dunleavy for all of their years of service and outstanding service to benefit the Hadley Schools and the Town of Hadley. So thank you, Robie and Linda, if you're watching.
Here.
Thank you very much.
And I also thank them, two meetings, from the board of selectmen and the townspeople.
Great.
So they were recognized at their two meetings. The one, they were still there, and the last one on Monday.
Good.
So it's been done.
Donald, we have a warrant article regarding H cog, and are you able to report back now, or is that still? What are we gonna say on town meeting tomorrow?
I gave David the new information, and we didn't notify the cog in time, we had to notify him by forty-five days, which we didn't, and we personally had to notify the executive director within twenty-five days, which didn't meet the deadline either. So I think all we can do is discuss it like a non-binding referendum, and maybe we could take a vote, and then it's gonna be pushed off to the fall.
Do we wanna?
If the townspeople wanna do that.
Do we even wanna do that, or do we just wanna pass over it until the fall?
Well, it's up to the board, you know?
Do you think anything will be clarified by the fall? I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring a sullied light to this, especially if the changes are gonna be made over there, and I don't want people with a poor taste in their mouth, the way it's kind of been a rough, it's a rough place to be right now. But that doesn't mean that it's not gonna get, hopefully, corrected or rectified.
Well, I guess the biggest issue, Jerry, is we had a straw vote. I'm not gonna say what it is, but they have one asset left because of executive sessions again, and the straw vote was to sell that asset. And so then, there's no other revenues to provide for six hundred thousand dollars a year that they have to come up with.